Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Situate Board of Selectment Meeting for March 15th, 2011. It's approximately 7:02, and so we're starting. Are there any electronic devices being recorded tonight, aside from our own, Mr. Rosen? Roser? Good. Seeing none, let's move to the very first agenda item, which is acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Chair, I think we should, I think we're going to be postponing item number five, so I would move to accept the agenda as modified with the deletion of item number five.
Fair enough. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so now we move on to the walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which happens to be agenda item number three. It's a discussion and vote, transfer of the common vicular's license of Dad's place at 222 Hadley Road. And it is the applicant, Mr. Patel here. Could you please come on up to the mic, please?
Yeah.
And it's my understanding that you're looking to have the vicular license transferred from the present owner to yourself? Is that it? Okay. And just so, the present owner, Kim, has already been, have they been paid up, or are they paid?
Yes.
Okay. And so it's just a matter, are you buying the business? Is that what's going on, or what's, why is the need for the transfer?
Because change of the ownership.
Change of the ownership, okay. So now you're taking over in some form of the property? Okay. And questions at all from the board on that? Mr. Vignani?
Are you keeping it the same?
Yeah.
Same operations, convenience store, little grocery store?
Yeah.
Do you live in Situate?
Yeah. I had been working there for seller since three years.
Oh, you've been working there for three years? Great.
And you're at, you live at Standish, well, you're on, fair enough, so you're in the neighborhood, so you understand it. Other questions at all from the board?
Just a comment, I've seen them there, they put a lot of time in, I believe it's him and his wife, they seem to put in a lot of hours in that business.
Oh, good. It's a great location, has a lot of history from way back in the twenties or thirties, so it's nice to see that you're willing to continue that on, so.
Thank you.
The town appreciates it, I'm sure the neighbors in Shore Acres and Egypt area also appreciate it, so you're doing a great service to the town. Motion, please?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to transfer the common vic license held by Dad's place to Dad's Place Store, 222 Hadley Road in Situate.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Further discussion, question from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number four, a discussion vote on the bond issue, Treasury Collector. Jane, could you please come on up?
Appreciate it.
Briefly, if you could just describe what you're looking to do?
We sold the bond last week, as you all know, I've been talking about it for the past couple of months. It was $9,756,000. We did excellent in the sale. We got a true interest cost rate of 3.11, and that includes a premium upfront cash of $485,000. So we sold very, very well. We received our bond rating, I think all of you received a copy of it in your packet, and we did well, it was comparable to what we were already rated with Moody's. This time we made a change, and we received a rating, did a site visit with Standard and Poor's, so it was a comparable rate at double A with a stable outlook, so. But if you read the information, and you know, it was very positive with the future room for an upgrade, hopefully.
If I may, just before we get off the subject, I think the comments paid particular attention to the whole financial team, and that's from the Town Administrator, to yourself, Jane, to the Finance Forecasting Committee, I think it's all part of the same team, and it spoke very positively of it. And I think the reason that we were able to keep the bond rating in these days is doing no small part to what all you people have done, from the Financial Forecasting Committee up to the Town Administrator. It's, thank you for keeping us up there.
You're welcome.
Mr. Murray?
If I could just follow up, thank you, Mr. Chair, if I could just follow up what Mr. Norton said, and I'm glad that the press is here, Kelly's here, and people from, you know, else, because, you know, we had as part of this a pretty detailed discussion of our finances by Standard and Poor's, which is certainly an independent assessment, it's not coming from any of us or anything in-house, and I just want to read just a couple things, if I may.
Sure.
The town's finances, quote, "Very strong income and property wealth levels in proximity and access to diverse Boston metropolitan statistical area. Improved financial management practices and good combined stabilization and general fund positions. Low overall net debt burden and modest future capital needs. Unemployment rate of 7.1% remains favorable as it is below Commonwealth and National averages. Fundamentally, the town's main revenues are consistent and strong." And admittedly, I'm cherry picking words, but the other stuff is just pretty much statistics. This is all the sort of subjective stuff they talk about. "The town recently hired an experienced town administrator who in a relatively short period of time improved several financial management practices. The town is thorough in its budget preparation and forecasting processes and conservative in nature with assumptions borne out by variance analyses. Along with the budget management, also produces a five-year capital improvement plan," Tony, you heard about that? "...that identifies funding sources and is linked to the town's multi-year forecast. Capital improvement plan outlines projects that will be funded each year through the budget and also establishes guidelines for debt borrowing." They do make some suggestions that we can improve on, but they are things that I'm aware of, that we are actually working on. So in addition to the numbers that Jane provided and all those statistics, I was just particularly drawn to the narrative that comes from Standard and Poor's, particularly in the context of everybody decrying this or decrying that, there's a lot of good things that we're doing, and I just wanted to draw people's attention to that. And if, Kelly, if you want this document, I'd be glad to give it to you if you want some quotes from it.
I also have a press release that was provided to me by First Southwest that I was going to give to Kelly tonight and anyone that's interested in it.
Sure, that'll be great.
I just want to, sorry, mention too, that in some of the documentation from Standard and Poor's, it stresses the importance of the collection rate and the revenues, the tax revenues being the main source. And I know things are difficult, and I know collections are very tight here, but it was critical that we maintained a strong collection rate, and over the past few years, we've been able to maintain that, and just wanted to say thank you to my staff as well, that it's really paid off, and it's much appreciated. So it was, it was very good, the time and effort especially by Tricia put into that, the assistance of Mary and Steve Jazimowski, Mary Gallagher, I meant, I don't think people realize behind the scenes how much work is really involved in preparing for a bond issue. This particular bond issue had several, as you can see, I don't think you've seen the paperwork that you have to sign yet, but.
I have.
Oh, you have. There are several, and Kim has seen it, there are several within the 9.7 million, there are several different small items within that. So it's been a lot of work, but it really paid off for us. We included some things that I hadn't initially planned to include in there, like the Wamptutuck, but given the low rate environment, it really was a good decision, I think, that we made, so I'm very proud of that, so.
Sean, did you have?
I just have one quick question, Jane. What is the difference between an interest rate and then a true interest cost of 3.11?
Well, that's because, as part of the, we have this big document that, you know, I spent a couple of months preparing with other departments in Town Hall, getting all the backup materials on our financial position. And as part of that document that the bidders see when it's made public, is a requirement to include the premium. So as part of the list, we had eight different people that bid on our bonds, which was very good, and some of them had different premiums that they were including as part of that bid. So when you look at it in total, it nets out to that true interest cost of 3.11, because they're giving us $485,000 upfront.
Okay.
And also, I just wanted to mention something, because we've discussed it at previous meetings, when we were talking about the capital project, capital plan a couple of weeks ago, that we were talking about the terms and relieving some of the pressure on the general fund for future budgets and such. And I had mentioned that when we do the bond, that'll be part of the vote, and you'll see that tonight in the paperwork that you'll be signing, that it has the different longer useful life, because equipment, statutory requirements, it's a five-year borrowing limit, but we've extended it for several pieces of equipment to 10 years. It might not be 10 years in this bond, because I may have done some short terms, so in total, it is 10 years. So you're voting that tonight.
Mr. Vignani? Just two quick comments. Great job on that, number one, that's a great rate and a great premium. So just so you guys don't understand, we get $485,000 back from them in cash, of which some of it has to go to actually pay for the whole process, and some of it has to be allocated to.
Wamptutuck.
The Wamptutuck debt exclusion portion, but there is a chunk of money there that's going to be at the disposal, possibly be at the disposal, we'll have to discuss how it should be allocated, but for, you know, some sort of use in the future. So that's an extra benefit. And then you also mentioned the bonding and the whole capital plan. Jane sent, sent me over and forwarded to everybody the capital plan, that spreadsheet. Last week, I was really concerned about what the impact of the debt, capital plan was going to have on the debt, and the numbers that we had last time, we weren't clicking in terms of what I was looking for and what she provided, but it actually does show that it's keeping it at a fairly level number. So it's not, it's not going to have an impact at what we've done so far in the out years. So that was, that was very comforting for me to see that, and thank you for providing that. That's a document we should get every year when we go over the capital plan, so we can see exactly what the impact is in the out years, and, you know, you had choices A, B, and C, depending on how long we want to amortize stuff for. So thank you for preparing that.
And we'll discuss that for the future years, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, whether I bond again in two years or three years, the extension of what may be the five-year term versus extending it to 10 years or 15 years for some of the equipment.
Good.
Motion, Mr. Kim?
Please, please, Mr. Chair.
I think I have to make this one.
Okay.
Look, move the Board of Selectmen approve the vote as printed in the certificate of vote, and include a copy of said document with the minutes of tonight's meeting, 3:15:11.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Murray. Any discussion? Oh, I actually, forget that. Any questions? All right, all in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimous. Good.
Mrs. Kim, may I have one moment to just, I noticed we have a visitor tonight, a boy scout maybe here in attendance for marriage badge or something. Why don't you just introduce yourself, your name, so.
I'm Joe LeBlanc, I'm working on a legal required marriage badge.
Yep.
Of citizenship and community, so I'm just hoping to be the tenant or the selectman meeting your city council meeting, and then who knows, and I'll discuss with my counselor on what exactly the meeting and what issues the meeting took place with.
Great, thank you.
John, did you get that? Did that come through? All right. Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc, and thank you.
You picked the right meeting.
Hopefully a short one.
Might be a quick one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks, Jane.
Agenda item is, moving on, I'm deleting, so we're moving on to agenda item number six, a discussion vote, award contract for water pipes and fittings, bid number 11-WA-01. Mr. Cafferty?
Good evening.
What are we doing here tonight?
Well, we got a couple bids. This one in particular, we went through what the water department typically uses for pots and materials each year during water repairs. We spliced it all together, put it all together in one package, and put it out for bid, so that we could purchase it in one lump sum instead of piecemeal as it goes. So the water department, instead of having a break and needing to run to a supplier in the middle of the night, has the materials on hand and can do the repairs. And by bundling it all together, we're, instead of paying list price, we're getting a better bid price on it. So that's what this contract is.
And how do you come up with these numbers? In other words, the numbers that you're, are you suggesting that in the course of a year, these are potentially what we anticipate for, for parts and fixing it, in other words? Is that what you're basing it on, a year, two years, three years?
On a year. This is one year's approximate value. And the way we worded the contract is that we have, if we have additional pieces that we use, just say, for example, we use one of the items where tees, because sometimes you have to cut a tee in if you're putting a new hydrant in. So there's a cast I and T, there's a limit for two of them there. If we need additional, say we use two of them up, because we happen to put five hydrants in that are destroyed or hit by cars, then we can buy it at that same unit price from that one supplier. That's the way it's stipulated in the contract for one year.
Let me ask you this, in other, so in other words, what's the basis that you look, do you look the past year, is that what you're looking at?
Past years, yeah, I worked with Jimmy Barrows, and we put it together on what they figured they would use in a year.
So we're basically hedging our bets, saying that we're anticipating the cost to go up so we can lock in? Is there a downside if the prices go down, and that we're still stuck?
Well, I don't think the prices are going to go, go down, and we're able to purchase it in, as one lump sum, as opposed to running to a supplier for each individual piece. It's, it cobbles everything up, and it makes it a little nicer.
Mr. Harris?
Typically, what we'd do, I think, if I'm speaking, just correct me, if we needed something, we'd run over to Holdley and Rockland and get what we needed. This is probably, is it fair to say it might be a unit price per lineal foot for six-inch cast iron, or eight-inch, or, you know, cast I and Ts?
We covered everything that they typically use in a year.
Right. So it's, it's not, it's not like we're locked into a dollar amount, it's probably per foot or per item, isn't it?
We would lock into a dollar amount that now, instead of having, because we went to different supply houses for the bid, and we were able to get a better price.
Right.
One of the things that we would have is we'd take delivery of this material for these costs.
Okay, right.
Have it at the water department, so instead of having a water break, you know, the lighthouse, the water department driving to Holdley's or driving to Canton to go pick up the pots at 3:00 in the morning, they have them there, and they can go make the fix, right down in there.
You will take a delivery of all the stock?
We'll take delivery of everything, and we'll use it.
Right. If you don't use it this year, use it the following year.
Yeah, we'll always, we'll always use the pieces. But as I said, we can use that same unit price.
Right.
Over and above this for purchasing.
That's great.
Because our, you know, total over the year is probably over 25,000 pots and pieces when things go, but this puts it all nice and neat by master in law that we put out the bid.
Close to, on the bid prices, they were very close.
Yeah.
Good.
Pretty tight.
Other questions from the board?
Motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract for water pipes and fittings, contract number 11-WA-01, to Ferguson Waterwork Sumner and Dunbar of Canton, Massachusetts, for a total bid price of $32,486.81, with payment to be made at the unit prices.
Second? Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion? Seeing none, any questions in the audience? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Great. Moving on to agenda item number seven, it's a discussion vote, award contract seawall repair, number 11-FS-02. Kevin, what are we looking at here with the seawall, and where's the seawall we're looking to repair?
This is the infamous FEMA repair job from 2007. The repairs will take place in North Situate, First Cliff, Minor Beach, Second Cliff, and Third Cliff.
Can you say that again? North Situate?
North Situate, First Cliff, Minor Beach, Second Cliff, and Third Cliff.
Gotcha.
And the plans are available for review in my office, if anybody wants to come out and take a look at them. This is for the 2007 storm. We have all the FEMA paperwork we received recently, about six weeks ago or eight weeks ago, we're able to cobble it all together, get a bid out to place, and this is the net results of the bids for the FEMA work. And it's tight money-wise, but we believe, you know, we're under what our value is for the total contract, but the other thing that we have is the FEMA money is running out soon, so we have to spend it or we'll lose it.
These are private walls, are they not, that we're fixing, or?
They're, they're various.
Private and public, but FEMA actually is the one who's actually paying for the repairs.
FEMA is paying 75%, 25% of town funds are going into the walls. And actually, it's less than 25% because I, we put the contract out to bid first, which was last year, and we didn't have all the FEMA funding, we didn't have the town match also. So I applied for a DCR grant, we got a DCR grant for $50,000, which is coming in as part of the town's portion. Our portion is about $203,000, and out of that $203,000, $50,000 is from that DCR grant, so.
Mr. Norton?
Yes, yes, Mr. Kim, thank you. Are we running into a problem by putting up 25% of the total funds that will be used to fix private seawalls, when we have stated, I guess, over the past couple of months, that we weren't going to spend town funds on private seawalls? Is there, is there a conflict here, or am I reading something into it that, that more into it than I should? I don't think I am.
No, I don't think you are either. I think, you know, we've, we've said that back in the past, and with all fairness to the people that we talked about back in January, you know, frankly, I can see that, you know, there's a little.
I see.
Irony going on, and kind of a, you know, a change of position on it, and I'm a little leery about that. I realize that we do receive federal funds for it, but now we are saying that as a town, we're going to pay for it, and frankly, out of fairness to those people, we're going to do it for this project. What about the remaining ones?
That's my point, Mr. Harris.
I guess the glass is quarter full rather than three quarters empty, the way I look at it, because I would, I see what Joe's saying, but I might say, jeez, if, if we can get, you know, if we only have to pay 25%, let's continue. If we don't do this, you know, Kevin can answer better than me, it might go away, and then we might have to, if we want to fix, we might have to do the whole thing. Granted, then we'd only be doing the public ones, but.
I'm not saying.
And I just, hold on one second, gentlemen, just, Kevin, the 25% that we have come up with, has that been town authorized?
Yep.
Yes, back in.
Three or four years ago, we did a.
It was, it was years ago.
2007, 2008, right?
You know, I thought about this, this project was already in the books.
Yeah.
Prior to everything coming to light, and FEMA had the funding in, in everything else, so.
But FEMA came in and said that this is storm-related, and they're going to, they're going to fund it.
FEMA came in, in from the 2007 storm.
Right.
And evaluated, but back in 2007, there wasn't the emphasis on private-public, I don't know if that was brought up, I wasn't here, I don't, I don't know what the issues were.
But FEMA hasn't offered us money for some of the other repair work, you know, it hasn't qualified.
Correct.
Mr. Harris?
Just one other comment. Has the Seawall Committee looked at this, or no, where it became in at this 2007?
It just, it came in Thursday, we just got this on Thursday. We have talked about it in the Seawall Committee, about the project and about funding it, and, you know, how things were going with it. But as I said, these, these FEMA funds, the problem with the FEMA funds is, is they will run out. And actually, we have an extension on the FEMA funds. Yeah, I think they were supposed to run out in July, and we've asked for an extension for, we've been keeping them aware where it was, because we were delayed technically by FEMA getting their budget approved. That's why we never received the, the project worksheets that we should have to do the project itself.
Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear, I'm not necessarily saying vote against this. I'm just bringing to light a situation that I think might, we might be facing down the road by voting for it. And I'm not, you know, 75%, it's very difficult to turn that kind of money down. That's all, I'm just bringing that to the board's attention.
No, I think, I think you're right to raise the issue. I mean, that's why I asked initially, is it a private or are they public walls? And I think the inconsistency is that we were pretty much straightforward with the residents who came in back in January, saying no. And, you know, I have to say, all right, this is an issue that frankly, we have to address going forward, and I don't have an answer. I just feel like public funds from the town shouldn't have to go for private walls, just as much as public funds shouldn't go for fixing somebody's private wall, a stone wall, or cutting down trees on their property, or fixing the driveways, or fixing their septic system, or fixing a pipe, sewer or water pipe on their own property, if it's, unless it's a town issue. But this certainly raises an issue that I frankly feel that, out of fairness, they could turn around and say, and I'd have to say if they're sitting here tonight, you're right, we did contribute through town meeting, public funds for repairing private seawalls. My biggest bone of contention is, is that if public funds are going to go towards private rights or private items or structures, there's got to be a public benefit to it. I understand the argument is generally, well, if the walls are, are broken, then it's going to impact potential public infrastructure, whether it's water, sewer, roads. But I think a little bit more is that on the beaches or those areas, there's got to be some right of access, but that's an issue for a different day, I think. But I think you're absolutely right, Joe. I think, in all fairness to those people, I'm right away, I'm thinking, gee, we told them no, and now we're contributing public funds. It's already been voted, so it's not even like, you know, we can change it, because it's been authorized by town meeting, and that's democracy, and that's what's been spoken. But it's certainly an issue that I think we need to get a grip on before we do have for future, and I'm looking at you, Kevin, because you're just sitting there.
No, it's okay.
But I mean, I think that's an issue that we need to address, because it's, out of fairness to them, I'd, I'd be sitting at home right now saying, for the love of Pete, what the heck you folks thinking, you know, we were in here, and you're not going to contribute money, and now you're saying you are, you already have, and you've set a precedent. So all fairness to them, I can appreciate it. Mr. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's an interesting point. I think everybody's right here in identifying all sides of it. My take on this is, I have several things. One is, I think the operative phrase is going forward, you know, moving forward. Town finances were different three or four years ago, when this was all authorized and so on, and, you know, we've already made this commitment to the federal government, and the federal government's pretty much made it to us, so, you know, I think really, moving forward, here we are. I mean, regardless of even 75, 25, even if it was 50/50, I mean, the commitment's there, the money's there, we're, I think, but you're absolutely right, I think, moving forward. Some of these other points, I think when we discuss this in the future, that we need to consider is, is like, and they're subtleties, but is it protecting a private beach, or is it a wall that's protecting, you know, a region that happens to be located on private land, that people are allowed to walk on historically, versus people getting kicked off private beaches that are being protected by things? So, and we're not going to answer these tonight, but sorts of subtleties in this that, that the private versus public access get, issue gets kind of gray. And then also, some of these walls, I'm pretty sure, some aren't, but some of these walls, I'm pretty sure they're exactly continuous. Some of it's so-called public, and then you wouldn't even know it, but then some of it happens across private property, but it's one continuous structure, so you can't really fix the public part without fixing the private part. It's not that the private part is, is all nicely tied up in a bow where the public part is. And so it's, it's a lot of subtleties there, but both you guys are right, and I see just moving forward, we're going to need to get our hands around this as funding goes. But I applaud Kevin, and as we all do, we applaud the federal government for, for helping us on this, and particularly with this very good bid price.
And I agree, not that anybody, when the federal government's willing to pony up 75% of the cost, I mean, we'd be foolish not to accept it. So I don't want anybody to think out there that, you know, we're trying to decline money when it's offered. I don't think anybody on this board has, but it's just an issue that I think is worth discussing. You're, everybody's absolutely right, yeah.
Motion.
Please.
If I can, I'd like to bring up, bring up two issues on this. I, we didn't do a full property research on this, on this whole project. I was aware the area down in North Situate, a lot of the area down the Glades, I believe, is private beach or held by a beach association. So we left that as an ad alternate. We have enough money to do that, and the reason I kind of culled it out as an ad alternate, because if we didn't have enough money, I knew that was a, a private area, and we'd be able to pull that out to do the entire project. Otherwise, the base bid for the project, instead of $786, was $610,000. Out of this $786,000 contract, we might have $805,000 or $810,000 total, so we don't have any room for change orders, additional work, or anything else. I've already made that clear to the contractor. We're going to go out with this FEMA work and do exactly what's on that storm. We might have a sec, what was exactly damaged from that storm. We might have a section of wall that's been destroyed from one of the other storms, and we're going to go right by that, and we're going to rebuild a section of wall that was culled out in that 2007 storm, and then we're going to skip over a whole destroyed section, do the next section. A lot of these FEMA projects are jumping up and down the coast, and you lose a lot, you spend a lot of your money in mobilization. If it was my choice, I would rather have all the FEMA money and let me pick a mile of seawall that I'll completely rebuild and just walk away from it that way. But that's not the essence of the FEMA, the FEMA money. You guys are going to get calls about it, people are going to say they came out with a machine, spent all this time and money, and they left my wall, which was worse than this guy's wall. And that's kind of the nature of the beast with this type of contract.
Well, that's why, Kevin, you'll never be a federal bureaucrat.
That makes sense.
And we told them in the meetings, we brought it up with FEMA in the meetings, how frustrating it was for us, so.
Tony?
Kevin, when's this work going to happen? Kevin, when's this work going to happen?
I am, I'm trying to fast-track this as quick as possible. I've already had legal take a look at it, Jim Toomey's office has taken a look at it. He made a little addition to this, that's why there's a supplement to it, he wanted some additional language added from the contract. We're trying to get started within three weeks, if we can get all the paperwork together, if they can get their bonds in and everything else, because we are under the gun with the FEMA time. FEMA hasn't given us anything in writing, where they said, you have an extension, but they've said verbally, we're going to receive an extension.
I was asking, because obviously, in the capital plan, there's some money for seawalls, and in the override that we're putting before the town, there's some money for seawalls, so it may be cost-effective to, you know, merge a project, doesn't look like it's going to work.
Unfortunately, we'd have to include that with the bid, we couldn't just award a change order of that magnitude to one contractor, I'd love to be able to do it, but Master and Ollie won't let us because, because of the way the contracts worded up, but I'd love to have a little extra money to say, yeah, you're right here, that area is damaged, fix that area up for this, this section of wall, and continue on, but we...
But you don't think you could do that?
We don't have any money right now.
No, no, I'm saying, if town meeting passed a capital plan that has...
I don't think we have time where everything will kick in, in time, I think the, judging from the last FEMA project we did, it moved very quickly, they were able to do the work fairly quickly. You're paying top dollar for very large equipment, because they're moving 12-ton stones, so you might be paying $300 an hour for an excavator, and you might be paying top dollar to have a heavy truck come in with a 12-ton stone, so, and that's, that's the type of armor stone that we're going to be setting.
Well, town meeting's not too far away, so it may coincide, but just something to think about.
It's a possibility, I mean, it'd be great.
Stephen Lynch didn't bid on this.
No.
Seems funny. He's done a lot with us before, he was even doing the...
He's, he's done a lot of work before, and we actually went through, because there was an addendum and a change in the time, and we called every bidder on the bidders' list who got plans, and left them a message the day before, and told them, that, you know, just a reminder, it's bidding tomorrow, and we never saw...
Right, well, all right.
I heard he was working in Marshfield, maybe he's going to work in Marshfield, and can't do it two places at once.
Motion?
Please, Chair. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract and supplemental agreement for the revetment repair project, Contract 11-FS-02 to Northern Construction, Inc. of Waymouth, Massachusetts, for a total bid price of $786,325, with payment to be made at the unit prices and/or lump sum prices pending receipt of certificate of insurance, 100% performance, and 100% labor and materials bond.
Second. Segmented by Mr. Harris for the discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Question, Mr. LeBlanc.
Just a question, Mike. Is it private, exactly how much is private and how much is public? If we're spending 25 percent versus 75, on 10% private, that's obviously a good idea, versus if we're, it's 50% private and 50% public, is 25% subject to that?
I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 75 percent, that's all?
75 percent is federal money.
It's federal fines, and then it's going to be less than, than the, a little less than 25 percent, because there's 50,000. Of the walls themselves, Kevin, the percentage of, do we have an idea as to...
We didn't calculate that. I know, I know the area down the Glades is all on a private beach. I believe the area in Second Cliff and Third Cliff is town-owned property, and that's, that's a lot of the area that's being done, that's, that's the biggest section. And one of our outs are, the way the contract is kind of set up, one of the jetties, that the equipment's probably going to have to cross the jetty to get to the work where it has to do, and as he crosses the jetty, he's going to have to rebuild it as he goes to have a stable platform.
Is this in, the jetty being out near the lighthouse, or the jetty out in Minnetonka?
Off, off.
Whereabouts?
Off Third Cliff, I believe.
Okay.
To get out on that other side.
Okay.
We had a couple, we had a couple areas, he's going to have to build his way in, and build up some of the wall, in Second and Third Cliff area, which will be helpful.
All right. So, the short answer is, we don't know the exact percentage, but it sounds like there's probably, estimating it, Kevin, two-thirds, one-third?
Yeah, it could be somewhere around there, yeah. I, we could do it money-wise, but...
Somewhere in the ballpark of two-thirds, one-third, or...
It'd take me a couple minutes to figure it out.
Three-quarters and a quarter, probably. Private versus public?
Yeah, that, that area, if we went out, like, from Peggy Beach, around out there, that area, a lot of that's all, I believe, is town-owned land, and that whole jetty, and the whole front of the wall, a lot of that's going to have to be rebuilt, just to get out to where the work has to happen.
So, it's weighted heavily towards public repairment, as opposed to private repairment?
That could be fair, yeah, that's the biggest, that's the biggest portion of that. And, a lot of people gave, you know, we requested rights of access through one, different areas of town, and a lot of people came through with the rights of access. A couple people didn't, they didn't want to see it happen unless we did work in front of their house, but a lot of people did step up in town, which was nice.
Good question, nobody asked it on the board, so, all right. Did we vote on that? I think we did, right, Kim? All right, fair enough. Kevin, thank you very much, we're going to move on to a next agenda item, which is a discussion vote, Situate Marine Park Uplands Project of 117 Edward Foster's Road, and Kevin, you've got a sidekick here.
Yes, I do, and he's all dressed up for it.
Also, which is good. Mark, good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen.
So, we're talking about the Marine Park, finally getting that all built out, and the walks around the Marine Center, correct?
Very good stuff. This is the park portion of the Situate Marine Park.
When would they get started on it, after the bids? What's the projected time to start?
We're pushing this along the same as the, same as the Seawall project. We could be ready within three to four weeks to start up, provided the contractor is able to get his performance bond, and everything else, and his insurance requirements all set.
Completion estimated, how long would it take?
We give them 120 days, but we're hoping to have them out of there, middle to end of June, probably close to the end.
So, maybe before Heritage Days, or something along that part, where hope is, so it'd be nice for the town?
And we might slow them down a little bit, if all the boats aren't moved, so we can claim...
Once they get a notice to proceed, we'll be meeting with the boatyard operators to make sure everything's pretty closely coordinated, because of that time of year. Votes will be going in, votes will be getting long, they're going to be bringing equipment in there.
So, if you go to the Marine Center, and you're in the parking lot facing the building itself, it's going to be taking place on the right-hand side, going out and around, correct?
Correct.
Great to see it.
It is a CPC project.
And the amount the high bidder, or the low bidder, actually, is, T Ford Company? Motion?
It's Mass Pavement Incorporated.
So, are the paths made out of pavement? What is the, it's walking paths, right? It's not the gangplank?
No, no, these are, these are walking paths, and one other transitional way from the upper level down to the lower level. But we, the plans were recently reviewed, we are going to be meeting with the Commission on Disabilities, Jeff Dugan has taken a look at him, and he's got some comments that he wants to share with us, so we're anxious to make sure that his...
Yeah, I was just going to say, make sure you make it accessible for, or a portion of it should be, whatever it is with Jeff Dugan.
You know, that's not only something that we want to do, but it's something that we're required to do, so certainly, we look forward to hearing from Jeff.
It's also, the pathways are going to be of pervious material, it's gone through conservation, like, a year and a half ago, and any updates, they've been getting, you know, all clearance on. They're also going to be doing, improving the drainage on the north side, there's going to be a swell put in to make sure that the parking lot and the boat storage area doesn't flood, there's doing, they're doing work on the, sort of the edge of the parking lot to the north of the Maritime Center, where it gets down into the wetlands, and hauling out all sorts of stuff that's there, and so it's going to be a general, in addition to the paths themselves, an overall improvement to the whole, the whole kit and caboodle up there.
You know, you just raised a point, and I just, I'm kind of going on a tangent here, but I think maybe something we should consider as a board, is to consult the Commission on Disabilities, and suggest to them, during the reviewing process, not necessarily with this project, but I know with zoning and, with the planning board, I don't believe they are a automatic referral source. In other words, when you receive a building packet, usually, there's automatic referrals with a number of departments, and I don't think the Commission on Disabilities is, which creates a lot of problems, in the extent that, you know, after the fact, something's built, and they say they have their building permit, they haven't gone through the potential architectural design review, and the long and short of it is disability, so it's not accessible, and I was just thinking, maybe we should write them a letter and say...
It's a good idea.
Are there changes in the bylaws that maybe they should be out of referral, so that when people go through this process, they don't get their permits, and then find out, after the fact, guess what, you haven't built something that's compliant with this accessibility, just a thought process. Not that I'm, I'm just going there because I've seen...
That's a good idea, usually in the plans, we, it's set up so that they, has to be built ADA requirements and everything else, so the engineer and the contractor are on the hook to make sure that they meet the requirements. It's never a bad idea to get everybody involved in it.
I know, from your perspective, it is, because it's a town project, but I know with the private end of things, sometimes, for whatever reason, they're sometimes missed, and so this way, we can get them in the channel, but that's a whole nother issue, but I just want to remember, thanks, Kim.
Any other questions, Mr. Norton?
No.
Motion?
Motion. Move the Board of Selectmen vote to award the contract and supplemental agreement for the Situate Marine Park Improvement Phase Four to Mass Pavement Reclamation, Inc. of Headover Mass, for a total bid price of $154,349, with payment to be made at the unit price and/or lump sum prices pending receipt of a certificate of insurance, 100% performance, and 100% labor and materials bond.
Second. Segmented by Mr. Murray, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, gentlemen, that's excellent. We look forward to it, should be very exciting, is very exciting. Moving on to agenda item number nine, which is to accept a gift, Harbor Masters Department. Mark, welcome back again, it looks like you're looking to accept a gift in the amount of $25,000, and this is from a longtime Cole Parkway Marina patron, the estate of Richard Clay, it looks like, and, you know, I have to tell you, they're bequeathing $25,000 from his estate, and I think that's marvelous, it's very nice to see that, any amount of money that's donated to the town, no matter what the amount, in this case, it's a very thoughtful amount that he thought of. Any idea what the money's going to be used with, towards, or...
We haven't decided yet, we want to get the money accepted, we'll get it into a gift account, and then we'll take a look at our needs, and try to do something with it that will sort of reflect Mr. Clay's spirit.
Have they, have they given any kind of, like, parameters, or anything like...
They've left it entirely to our discretion, but Dick was, he was an outdoorsman, he was very, he was an avid fisherman and hunter, loved being on the water, so I think it'll be great if we can come up with something, again, that sort of reflects that.
Not that I'm pushing...
It's a good problem, I'm not knowing...
It is, I have to tell you, one of the first things I look at, because, but I'm not sure if it's in your purview, it might be ours, but I look at that band shelter, and I say, it would be nice to build something that has a lot more dignity than what exists presently, and make it a little bit more presentable, and what better location than being able to look out into the boats, into the harbor, into the, right next to the Harbor Masters, than building a much more dignified location, structure? But that's my only thought. Mr. Norton?
Just a thought, after if and when we accept this, and I certainly think we will, that a letter be sent to the Mr. Clay's estate or family, thanking him for the gift, that's... Thank you, that's all I have.
Other questions from the board? All right, motion on that?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the kind gift of $25,000 from the estate of Richard Clay, on behalf of the Town of Situate Harbor Masters Office.
Second. Segmented by Mr. Harris, further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Mark, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I, can I go off agenda just for one quick second?
Sure.
Because during other business, I was going to mention the Jericho Ramp, that seems to be starting undergoing construction, and I thought maybe Mr. Patterson could probably do a far better job of it than I, and so while he's sitting here, maybe you could mention something, and just bring everybody up to speed what's going on briefly?
Sure. The reconstruction of the Jericho Ramp is a project that has been in the queue for several years, it's being funded by the Office of Fishing and Boating Safety, the former Public Access Board, they're paying for the entire project, I think the price tag is approximately $405,000, and again, no cost to the town. The project has been engineered, designed, permitted, the contract's been awarded to Sequoia Incorporated, their company out of Whitman, Massachusetts, and so, all of that is the great news, and the fact that we're going to have a brand-new boat ramp at the end of this is more good news. The, if there is a downside to it, it's the fact that we have to begin construction now, and it'll take about six to eight weeks, so that boat ramp could be tied up until May 1st. Again, this is the state's money, it's their schedule, I think it's, we're very, very fortunate to have this opportunity to have a brand-new boat ramp, so the fact that we kind of have to take our medicine for the next few weeks, will in the end be a small price to pay for the benefit that it's going to provide to the town and the region.
I noticed they had excavators there, beginning to put the equipment there?
Yeah, they're mobilizing.
They're mobilizing the equipment, they'll be blocking that ramp off any day now. I think there was a notification in the Patriot Ledger recently, and it's going to appear in the Mariner this week. I've talked with the commercial boat haulers in the area, Sims, who was talking with Brunel and Scolisi and some of the others, so we've gotten the word out to as many people as we can. And one other thing I thought of, that if there was a silver lining in any of this, is the fact that we have a first-class boatyard and boatyard operation with Situate Boatworks going on over at the Situate Marine Park now, they're up and running, and they can certainly take a lot of that pressure that would otherwise go to the Jericho Ramp now, some of the boat haulers, if need be, they can haul the boats over to the Marine Park, where those folks can launch in with their brand-new 35-ton travel lift. So, as I mentioned, the silver lining, the silver lining may be that, there might be a whole sector of people who would otherwise never avail themselves to the services that are being provided over at the boatyard, who are now going to go over there and experience that, so...
Just on a personal note, this project started back when I was Chair of Waterways, fairly long time ago now, and Mark was the acting Harbor Master, I think, at the time, and so we're both really happy to see this finally come into pass. We've been in the queue for a long time, and now the money's flowing, so this is really good.
Who is the grant writer?
There's no, no grant, we pretty much, it's not a grant coming to us that we pay for, the state's doing it entirely. We approached a gentleman named Jack Shepherd, he used to be called the Public Access Board, had conversations with him, they came down, did site visits, they looked at the plans, it's clearly, there are big problems off the end of the ramp, boats running aground, et cetera, et cetera.
Great. Mr. Harris?
So, what are they going to do, rip up the surface?
It's going to be a...
The whole thing?
Yeah, right.
Not just the surface, go on.
Well, I meant where the ramp itself.
And it's going to be shallower, Sean, so it's going to go out a little further, so you're not going to have that prop wash area, because they're going to put an apron out there as well. They're redoing the floats, not the pier, as well?
All new floats, all new pilings, all new signage, they're putting in a new, a new electrical service to the end, because there was a light out there that's been off and on for some time, so they're going to replace that.
Parking lot, is that within the domain of Waterways, or is that within the domain...
The parking lot is the town's, the boat ramp is a state public access facility, under the guardianship or custodianship of the town.
Fair enough, let's answer my question. Other questions? Mark, thank you, I appreciate it, because that's actually important for people to know. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next, 9A, a vote authorization, government officer to sign school project funding agreement.
Motion?
Please.
Move the pursuant to Section 5-6 of the Town of Situate Charter, and all applicable provisions of federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations. After consultation with the Situate School Committee, that John F. Daney, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Situate, is hereby authorized to enter into fully execute on behalf of the Town of Situate, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA project funding agreement for the Wampatuck Elementary School and Gates School Project, for the Wampatac Elementary School and Gates School Project, so-called, uh, between the Town of Situate and the MSBA, and to take any other action necessary to secure funding from the MSBA.
Second.
Discussion. Only question I have is, is that John Daney, bespelt D-A-N-E-H-Y and not Dahaney. Other than that, I'd be happy to accept that motion. Seconded by Mr. Norton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want me to do the second one?
Sure.
Sounds like you got a little dry throat there. Move, move the pursuant to section five dash six of the Town of Situate Charter and all applicable provisions of federal, state, local laws, rules, and regulations. After consultation with the Situate School Committee, that John F. Daney, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Situate, is hereby fully legally authorized to make final binding decisions with respect to the Wampatac Elementary School and Gates School Project, so-called, as more fully described in the project funding agreement between the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, and the Town of Situate.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Harris, and again, this was a correction on spelling, but it had nothing to do with, with Kim. I know it came from someone else, cause it's not Kim. Kim knows how to spell my name, but I appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good. Moving on to agenda item number ten. It's a vote class-two license renewal of Allen's Auto Service at Two Booth Hill, North Situate.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the class-two license held by Allen's Auto Service, Two Booth Hill Road, North Situate, for two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 Unanimous. And, uh, moving on to, uh, agenda item eleven. We're really blazing through this, folks, tonight. I can't believe it. Um, I probably shouldn't have said that. Accept resignation from the Recreation Committee and the Water Resources. Kelly, you've missed. We're almost done. That's alright. Agenda item number eleven.
Take a motion?
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Nancy Ives from the Recreation Commission. Further, the Board thanked Ms. Ives for her years of dedicated service to the Commission.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Murray. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to accept the resignation of Hart Peterson from the Water Resource Committee, and further, the Board thanked Mr. Peterson for his years of dedicated service to the Committee.
Second.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Norton. Further discussion. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Unanimous. Very good. Okay, uh, how about appointments for the Recreation, uh, Commission?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Eric Richmond as a full member of the Recreation Commission.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Wanda Craig and Marshall Robitaille to the three hundred seventy-fifth Anniversary Celebration Committee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Harris. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other business. We haven't done this in the past, at least, I think, two or three meetings, so I expect there's probably a lot on the plate. Mr. Harris, would you like to start, at least, maybe on basketball?
Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, I just wanted to mention, and Kim was nice enough to also copy this. It was a, um, an award that the Recreation Commission, as well as courses received, most you may or may not have heard about it, and there's a little, um, write-up that I could, if you had one second, I could just read it out loud.
Sure.
Kind of outlines how it happened and so forth, and it's, uh, was printed in, I believe, the Mariner. The Situate Community of Resources for Special Educational Courses, and the Situate Rec Department have been selected as recipients of the Massachusetts Recreation and Park Association's Program Outreach Award. The award's for a nonprofit organization that's gone over and above regular programming to provide a benefit to the community and rec- and the Recreation Director, Jennifer Vitelli, submitted a letter of the recommendation for course. The Recreation Department in November, back in November, the award ceremony will be on Wednesday, March sixteenth, in Hyannis. Um, just a, a quote that, from the director that, uh, sent this. He read the description for the award and immediately thought that the Course Foundation and our, in their collaboration was really thrilled last week that they were chosen. Said, oh, that was Jennifer's quote. And finally, um, it was unanimous decision by the Board to select this group. Quite a, quite an honor. Secondly, this is, I'm gonna steal Tony's thunder here. Um, last Saturday night, I had probably one of the best times. I attended my daughter's, um, basketball game, the Varsity Girls Basketball Game. Uh, it was held at, uh, UMass Boston. They lost like ten seconds, the score was tied, ten seconds ago, and they lost by two. It was, uh, I can see why Tony gets so excited when he talks about the programs, especially when his kids are involved in them, because it was pretty neat to sit there and see all the people from Situate. I went up with a couple that they didn't even have children in the program, and they just lived in Situate, and it was, was pretty amazing, and those girls, uh, i- it's fun to watch. I'd rather watch things like that than the professional sports. It, it's really neat. And just one last thing, if I could have another minute, and, well, Saturday I was busy, so Saturday morning I volunteered to help with the sailing signups, and I've mentioned this before, but I just have to mention it again. Um, signups were about, I think, at nine o'clock, and by ten o'clock, two hundred people had gone through this program, signed up. And it's pretty neat to, to sit there and, and, and help out, and it's really, it's very easy. But to see so many people so happy to be there to sign their kids up for the, this program, and the comments that I heard were only, how can we expand on this program, you know, and, and I think Joe, right from the beginning of, you know, trying to convince, and he didn't have to really convince us at the time, to buy the Marine Park and so forth, was part of it was to have a sailing program, and it is just, you just have to witness that. They started lining up at quarter four in the morning to sign up. You, and when I got there at eight-thirty, the beach chairs were fifty-deep, all lined up, but the people had gone inside. They were able to get inside. And if I could, I just wanted to mention, not, you know, it's not only is it nice to see that, but it's nice to see the, the instructors and some of the kids, Kim's daughter for one, who have come back to help with this, with this project, and it just goes so smooth, and if I could just have a minute, I'm just gonna mention their names if that's alright with you guys. Uh, there was Brendan-
Till ten o'clock. I mean, we're early.
Well, there was Brendan Horgan, Maddie Vaschan, Brenna Galvin, Kevin Burt, Michael Keefe, John Ward, Sam Malone, Ed Vaschan, and Katie Donovan, Kim's daughter. So it was just a pretty exciting weekend for me, so. That's it.
You're always talking about Waterways, Sean.
One, one item, Chairman, I noticed, I believe I already did read in the paper or somewhere, that we will not be receiving funding, uh, federal funding for the December storm. We didn't reach, uh, nor did Plummer County reach either one, the, the level, uh, necessary to, to, uh, receive any federal funding, so unfortunately, that, all the public losses on that storm will be borne by the town alone, so I just wanna bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
That's a good point, and, uh, because I don't think, I'm not sure how much it was reported, but I think it's worth saying that, you know, the Christmas two thousand and ten storm, all the public costs are, have been borne by the town, the Situate, and it's most unfortunate, you know, for us.
Yeah.
Mr. Vignani?
Sure. A couple of things, and, and Sean may have been a little modest. The girls' basketball team had a phenomenal year. They were ranked like number two in our whole area, and they made it to the division finals. So if they had won, they would've been playing at the Garden, you know, the next week. It was a great year, and it was a terrible, uh, terrible loss, and it, they came so close, so, but I heard it was a wonderful game. Um, on top of that, the boys' basketball team had a great year, too. They won a couple playoff games, and, um, um, and the hockey team have a phenomenal year as well, and they lost in a shootout in the semifinals of their division, so uh, it was a one-one game, and they lost in a shootout. I guess the other team scored on their first shootout, and, and the goalies, uh, stopped everybody else. So it was a great, a great year for winter sports, uh, for our high schools. Um, a couple of the quick things, um, as some of you may have seen in the paper, Senator Carey came to Situate this weekend. Um, Joe and I were at the, uh, the Maritime Center where, um, Jeff Rosen and his crew gave a presentation for the Massa Soyet, um, MEA, is that what, M-E-A-A or something?
Marine Educational Alliance.
Right. Uh, their coalition to try and, um, get the school open that we talked about several months ago, um, and it was good to see him. It was, it was kind of like, uh, Joe, what would you say, kind of like rock star status, where he's coming to town and everyone's kinda, he's around the corner, he'll be here in a minute, um, and he did his political thing. But he was very, very gracious and listened to the ideas and, and, uh, and supported the project, um, and I, I thought, uh, Jeff Rosen did a great job with the presentation. Tom Walter did a great job with the architectural stuff of it, and it was, uh, it was at the Maritime Center, which looked great. It was a beautiful day, and it was a really good turnout, so it was nice to see him come down and make the trip down for that, and again, the, the outcome was positive in him endorsing the project. The only other thing I have, which John may have on his list, is just this Sunday is the parade. Um, St. Patrick's Day Parade starts at Gates and goes through down the Front Street, um, so hopefully the weather will be good, and everyone will get out there and enjoy the holiday.
Mr. Murray?
Um, I have nothing to add other than the conversation we already had with Mark Patterson about the Jericho Boat Ramp, and Kelly, you had stepped out of the room, so if you could, uh, follow up with Mark Patterson, because they're doing construction on that ramp starting now. We need to get word out, and the timeframe is actually pretty favorable for us, so we had a long conversation about that, but that's the only thing I have right now. Thank you.
Great. Um, not much, I just, um, a few things I was just gonna mention. You've hit them all up, um. You know, I think I was driving by the Whittle's Walk, and I think, I know Bob Sanderson's back, and I think they've closed it down, so, you know, as far as like walking and doing things, which means it's turning into golfing season, so for everybody who's getting the itch to go out and golf, contact Bob, contact the course, start setting up, see if you can get your, uh, your, uh, your passes and plans on doing stuff. It's pretty exciting, um, which brings me to the next one, which is when you're driving down the Driftway, it's, it's kind of awful to the extent that there's a lot of garbage and trash, which gets us to cleanup day or shipshape day, which is gonna be a little over a month away, but people should start thinking about that, and if there's no storms, uh, try to get out and start picking up if you can.
Is there a date yet for that? Do you know?
Usually it's the beginning of March, uh, uh, May, and, um, I was gonna ask, um, Al and, uh, his wife Donna if there's, uh, anything set, but I figured the next meeting we'll have it.
Let's have that-
First Saturday of May, so it's kind of a earth, earth day. I think generally it's kind of centered around, so keep that in mind. The only other two things were, um, I know that in the future, I want to set on the agenda, this parking of Cole Parkway is a, kind of like things, coming attractions to talk about, discussing, maybe reconfiguring it, and maybe trying to do some things for, uh, long-term parking and generating some funds, and also thinking about getting some green space. And also, uh, the Pier Forty-four Committee's gonna be coming to us, uh, in two weeks, so people who are interested, sit tight, tune in, and, um, what's that, Timothy Leary, tune in and tune out, or whatever, but, uh, uh, any of it. That's it. So, uh, moving on to, uh, the next agenda item, which is Agenda fourteen. Seeing that, I was supposed to try to see if I could get it. Twenty-five minutes, I failed. I did it in fifty-five. Um, I'll take a motion.
We adjourn the meeting at eight o'clock.
Second.
Adjourned by, uh, Mr. Norton. Seconded by Mr. Harris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Folks, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Blank. Good night, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you, John.